Alex, were you saying that you're just getting over?
Yeah. But are you feeling better?
Yes. Are you, Andrew, are you part of the American Institute of Architects?
No, I used to be.
For the Nevada and Las Vegas chapter. And when did you?
The main board, I think I got off the board was probably twenty fifteen, something like that. Probably, probably right about the time I started with the planning commission.
Michelle, are you there?
I'm here. If you want to start, we can, but John Marshall's not here yet, so. And I don't think Peter's gonna join us tonight.
Okay, do we usually, do we wait for John? Is that what we're supposed to do?
No, I mean, you can start whenever you want. We have a quorum, so if you want to start now, we can. If you want to wait, then.
Are you guys good? Okay.
Recording in progress.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wednesday, January twentieth, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is called to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Alex, would you, Commissioner Veltto, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. Michelle, can we please have roll call?
Peter Gower is absent. Mark Johnson?
Yeah.
Arthur Munoz?
Here.
Thank you. Paul Levis?
Here.
Alex Felto?
Here.
John Marshall? He's, he's here, but he's muted, so let's go with that. Kathleen Taylor?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you very much. Next item is number three, public comment. Michelle, do we have any public comment?
I did not receive any public comment for this item.
Okay, we will close public comment and move on to item number four. It looks like we have a presentation by Amy Cummings, Deputy Executive Director, Director of Planning of the Regional Transportation Commission on the twenty fifty, twenty fifty regional plan.
Yes, we're moving Amy in and also Daniel. Dungus.
Great.
Hi, I'm Amy Cummings with the Regional Transportation Commission of Washoe County, and Dan Dungus is on the line as well. He's our planning manager. And we are in the process of developing our twenty fifty regional transportation plan. And Dan is going to walk us through where we are, and our hope today is to get your input on the draft list of projects that we've put together.
Thank you, Amy, and members of the commission. Can everyone hear me okay? Excellent. I'm going to share my screen and pull up the presentation here. Bear with me just a second. Okay. This. Okay. Everyone see that all right? Okay, thank you. Sorry, I hid my thumbnails with all your faces, so I could read my slides. But thank you for having us tonight. As Amy alluded to, we are going to present where we're at in the development of our twenty fifty regional transportation plan, or RTP as we call it. And this plan really identifies the transportation guiding principles and goals for our region. And really all of our investments that we do across all modes and programs at RTC. We really pride ourselves in the fact that we, you know, do extensive community outreach. And even though it's been a little challenging as of late with obviously the pandemic, we've had pretty good success. And I'm gonna get to that a little bit later, but through our social media outreach and a series of surveys, we've gotten some great response. And of course, working with our partner agencies. So we have a goal of completing this plan by this May, and so we're kind of in the home stretch here and happy to share that with you tonight. And I also wanted to add, please interrupt me at any time with any questions. You know, we kind of want your input in this to kind of be a dialogue, so happy to entertain those. So the guiding principles of our twenty fifty RTP are similar to our current plan, which is our twenty forty RTP. And, you know, they are safe and healthy communities, economic prosperity and innovation, sustainability and an increase in travel choices. And these next kind of, these next few slides are going to kind of walk through the goals that support those guiding principles and really how we implement that plan. As I mentioned, you know, we're really trying to do a lot of community outreach to get all the input we can when we're going through this process and making sure that the plan is really representative of our region. We do that in a number of ways. We kind of have a special agency working group that we convene every time we go through this process. We do have to update the plan every four years, and so it consists of a lot of our agency stakeholders, including staff from the city of Reno. We do also have an inter-county working group, which kind of looks kind of at our broader region. So, you know, coordinating with our partners in like Story County, Carson City, and the Tahoe Basin, as well as statewide partners like NDOT. RTC does have some standing advisory committees, a technical advisory committee, again with kind of agency staff in the region, but also a citizens multimodal advisory committee where we really kind of get that perspective from a variety of backgrounds. As I mentioned, we have been doing a lot of outreach through virtual presentations and surveys. And we also were fortunate to have a couple in-person and public workshops just as we were getting kicked off, kind of right when things started to really shut down. So that was pretty invaluable as well. And we are updating this plan with, in conjunction with another, a couple other efforts going on. One of them ours are coordinated human services transportation plan, which really looks at how we engage with local transit providers for people with like, you know, disabilities and seniors and providing access to healthcare and that sort of thing. And as we are here tonight, we are really trying to get this before all our elected and appointed officials to get their input as well. So this map on the right, just a quick breakdown of some of the safety needs in the region. You know, we look at this through a lot of variety of ways, but really focusing on crash data, looking at, you know, severity and frequency. And so we use this kind of as the starting point when trying to work with our partner agencies to see what kind of improvements we could really start to implement to really, you know, make things safer for everyone. RTC is really actively engaged in our Vision Zero Trucking Meadows Task Force. And it's not just transportation officials. We coordinate with law enforcement, public health officials, even have some private sector representation. We do invest a lot in our outreach and community awareness to, you know, put out PSAs and just remind people. You know, we try to do it like with timing, like with a time change or something, just to remind people, hey, it's getting darker earlier. Just please be aware. And when school's starting up, just, you know, expect to see more kids on the street, which kind of leads into the next one with our partnership with Safe Routes to School. Not only do we coordinate with them, but we also support them financially as well. So really a lot of avenues to kind of engage with the public and our stakeholders, just to really improve safety. One of our other goals is integrating land use and prosperity. I'm sure you are all very familiar with the regional plan update that TMRPA recently completed. RTC was very actively involved during that whole process. In fact, the map you see here is, shows a tiered land use system that was developed in the Trucking Meadows service area as part of that plan. And so we've incorporated that into our planning policies as well and even our project prioritization framework. And of course, we're always looking for opportunities to ledge, leverage, you know, higher densities in conjunction where our transit services and to reach those, you know, that are more maybe transit dependent in the community. And we did complete an affordable housing study about a year ago, which really kind of looked at some areas where we might be able to kind of see that nexus and increase service to assist with that. Sustainability is obviously a big item on everyone's mind. And, you know, as I mentioned, we do partner with our state officials. And we now have the Nevada Climate Initiative where we're, we're still kind of in the early stages of that, but, you know, working in close coordination with them to see how we can support that effort. You know, we do share common goals of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and really improving the air quality. In fact, our plan itself has to meet what's called transportation conformity. And essentially that means that, you know, the list of projects and programs that we are presenting in our plan will not have a, you know, an estimated traffic impact that might exceed what's our, what's called our motor vehicle emissions budget. So we work close with Washoe County Air Quality Management as well. And of course, you know, one of these ways we can achieve this is by investing in our active transportation, you know, providing safe and accessible connect, connections through our bicycle and pedestrian network. You know, and just providing those other options for people if they have other options from driving in their car. So here's just kind of a list of a few other RTP goals. You know, there's, we're implementing all of these in a variety of ways, but, you know, managing existing systems efficiently. You know, we want to preserve the investments that we do construct and that extends to our programs and our service like transit to just operating those at an efficient level so that it best serves, you know, the public. You know, we're really looking to, I'm sorry, promote equity environmental justice. That's kind of been in the headlines a lot these past few years, rightly so. And RTC is really wanting to do its part to engage our community as a whole and to look at any disadvantages that certain demographic groups might have and how we can better coordinate with them. Part of our effort with the RTP development is we worked really closely with city staff and trying to find this more holistic vision of downtown Reno. And I'm just gonna advance to the next slide here, because a picture's worth a thousand words. And really, we're looking at a way to kind of balance that, you know, fine line of maintaining an acceptable level of surface service for traffic circulation, but also really having these separated and safe places where people are comfortable, like walking and biking. And it's truly make the downtown area multimodal. So I won't go through all these improvements. The next few slides kind of speak to them. But really, we are happy to, you know, develop this with city staff to, and happy that, you know, they were supportive and we were kind of all come to agreement on some projects that we're recommending to move forward in our plan. Just these next few slides kind of highlight some of those. On West Fifth Street, for example, you know, looking at our safety data, really our crash data. We recognize that it is a high crash corridor. It's a, it's a pretty wide roadway, and so fortunately, that's sometimes a good thing. We have room to implement some of these improvements. So we're looking at possibly putting in a center turn lane with two travel lanes, bike lanes, and still preserving that on-street parking, because we do know that that is valuable to residents and city officials alike. And so there's always kind of these trade-offs, but where we can fit things in, where we have the capacity, that's really an ideal situation. Looking at Fourth Street and Third Street respectively. And you're probably familiar with the Lincoln Line Bus Rapid Transit Service that connects downtown Reno, the Downtown Sparks. That service started up a couple of years ago, and it's been highly successful in terms of ridership. Even with the hit we've taken during this pandemic, it's still one of our better performing routes. And the long-term vision is to extend that further west on Fourth Street. So looking at how we could accommodate that with different bus shelters and lighting and just making that a more, I guess, safer environment for pedestrians for kind of that first mile, last mile. Also looking on Third Street for perhaps a bike, a buffered bike facility there. So creating, again, some separation between bicyclists and vehicles. Fortunately, that is a very low-volume street, and we've been working with our partners downtown, looking at possibly incorporating some of that design into the lid on the retract, because I know they're looking to kind of beautify that and make it really a public space. On Vine Street, this one is exciting for me in particular. I, you know, this is another fairly low-volume road that's got a lot of room to work with. And so again, as, as with Fifth Street, we're looking to do a center turn lane and two travel lanes. And here, this, this image is just one concept where we have a little separation with these, you know, these plastic bollards. And, but perhaps most interesting is when you get up toward the freeway, looking at Vine Street, the bridge that goes over I eighty. Right now, it's, it's a little bit of a, interesting, to say the least. You know, it, it's a very narrow bridge, so there's really not any room for bicyclists or pedestrians. Kind of on the north side of the freeway, it's, it's really kind of a, not the safest design in terms of operations, that intersection. So we're looking at possibly converting that to a bicycle and ped only bridge or doing like a one-way southbound. And really, that would help connect the Bike Boulevard from Riverside Drive all the way up to the upper side of the freeway. So again, really trying to provide that connectivity between kind of the river and midtown up to the university and making it a place for people want to go to. So again, you know, I mentioned we, we did a lot of outreach. We had some in-person workshops in February. We did about three different surveys. We just finished up one earlier this week, actually. I'm sorry, it might have been last week, and my days are kind of running together. But to try to get the public's feedback on what their priorities are for some of these projects that we're proposing to move forward into this plan. And we've taken that input we've received, plus kind of this internal analysis that we've done to develop this project evaluation criteria. So again, as I mentioned, we were looking at safety, traffic volumes and congestion. We're getting those. Well, fortunately, we have existing volumes. NDOT, NDOT does a great job of doing annual counts. And they, they really cover a wide area all over the state, really, but particularly, we have a lot of good information and data here in Washoe County. And also looking at through our travel demand model, what some of those forecast volumes are and looking at congestion there. I mentioned the regional plan, their land use priority, looking at that tiered system that they have and how our projects align with, with those different tiers. Equity, again, as I mentioned, is another big consideration in this and project readiness. So really taking all these factors and kind of applying them to the original projects, seeing how they score. And really, that's just to inform us, you know, and provide maybe a little justification on how we want to move these projects forward. Just because a project might score really high doesn't mean we're gonna, you know, put all our investment in that and move that forward. Conversely, if, you know, a project maybe scores kind of low, but there's other value to it that, you know, doesn't really fall in one of these, these nice little buckets here. You know, we have the flexibility to kind of shift those around, and ultimately, our board kind of puts their stamp of approval on it. So. So with all that, we're kind of here. These are our proposed projects. I'm gonna go through a series of maps. I apologize, it might be a little hard to see this format, but we've kind of divided these projects into different timeframes of the RTP. So we have the first five years, which is really a lot of the projects that we're moving forward right now or currently in design. And they're in our transportation improvement program. And then we have the next five years, which are kind of bigger picture on the horizon that would be incorporated into our capital improvement program. And then finally, the remaining years, what we call the out years, that we're looking at more, more long-term implementation. And I should note as well that our plan has to be called, has to be what is called fiscally constrained. So basically, that means all the projects that we are showing and that are proposed, we have to demonstrate that it's reasonably expected we'll have revenues to implement them. So any project that's really kind of breaks the bank after we do our revenue forecast, you know, we have to kind of make those hard decisions sometimes. And those that we can't fit into our fiscally constrained plan, we kind of have a separate list of what we call our unfunded vision. So should funding become available, we can advance those. And this just kind of breaks it up. We did a South Meadows area study about a year ago and got some really valuable insight and information for some improvements down there. This doesn't capture all of them. A lot of them were probably what I would call more spot improvements, but these are some of the projects that kind of rose to the top that were a little more capital intensive that we want to include in this plan. The roads in purple you see are what we're calling privately funded. So for example, you can see Daybreak there and a couple others. And these are roads that, you know, have significance and, excuse me, connectivity, you know, to the network, but aren't ones that RTC anticipates funding in any way. But we still want to acknowledge that, include that in our travel demand model, so we can get more accurate projection of what those travel patterns are. And this way, we can show those too without really having an effect on our fiscally constrained plan. And we also did a study in the North Valleys a few years, maybe three years ago now. Again, that really yielded some great results on some proposed projects to improve connectivity up in that area that we want to move forward. I don't think it's in secret to anyone how, how the communities are really growing in the North Valleys there and just the amount of employment and residential development that's happening is really causing a lot of demand for this as well. So moving forward, and this is the twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty timeframe. And I apologize, I probably should have done a little better job of explaining what the different colors represent. But kind of the gold colored projects are what we're calling capacity projects. So this is where we would perhaps widen an existing road or extend an existing road. They also could be a new road altogether to make a connection that, you know, we, we think we will need after looking at our travel demand model. Kind of the dashed orange lines are projects that we're anticipating will be in design during that timeframe. So on this map, you can see the connector between Pyramid Highway and US three ninety-five. We anticipate that at that time will be in design, ready to construct in the out years. And the blue projects are multimodal, so that's really anything that's non-capacity. I do want to stress, however, that when we do capacity projects, you know, we incorporate multimodal elements. We're ever feasible and possible. So just because we might be widening a roadway doesn't mean that we won't also go and upgrade the sidewalks, make them ADA accessible, maybe put in some bike lanes or some separated bike lanes there. So didn't want you to think those were mutually exclusive. And finally, this is our, what we're calling the out years, the twenty thirty-one, the twenty fifty. Definitely a lot more capacity projects, looking at more connectivity up in the North Valleys. McCarran Boulevard, we will be doing, I think, another slide speaks to this coming up, but we will be doing a separate study with that. That's gonna kick off in a couple of months here, partnering with N- Um, partnering with N dot, they're helping to fund that study. Um, they do own and operate the road, but we do realize that that, you know, there's a lot of um. Needed improvements out there, and so it's going to try to take a holistic look at that, and just like some of the other studies we did, really um. Uh, hopeful, hope to get some recommendations for some kind of short term and longer term projects on McCarran. And again, this is just kind of a uh zoom of the North Valleys area for the out years. Um, you can really see all the projects that are being proposed to really enhance that connectivity. Uh, one of them that um, you know, RTC is really kind of. Uh, taken the lead on and working with N dot is the uh Pyramid UMS three ninety-five connector, and that includes uh improvements on Pyramid. We actually um were fortunate to receive a a grant to um assist with Phase One of that, so that's currently in design by N dot right now. Uh, another study we're doing uh currently is Eagle Canyon, um basically a connector between North Valleys and Spanish Springs. Um, we're not saying that Eagle, that the connection will go into Eagle Canyon on Spanish Springs, but. Um, kind of a, kind of a conceptual placeholder now, because we're looking at a a few different alignments up there. And likewise, extending Lemon Drive and um others, other roadways there to kind of address some of the. Pending development that's anticipated up there. I did mention the McCarran study that's coming up, we're also working with N dot on a um, looking at. Uh, operational and safety improvements on Mount Rose Highway. Uh, and that's taken the lead on that, but they are um, we're coordinating with them very closely. Um, we've heard um requests for uh doing a a traffic circulation study in the Verdi area with. Kind of the pending development up in there, that area. Um, also looking at um ways to make Virginia Street kind of more accessible in the downtown area, so. Um, aside from kind of the analysis we did already, um, not not wanting to forget about that Virginia Street is the main thoroughfare and and how we can. Um, address some of the walkability and accessibility issues down there. Um, as you're probably familiar with, we've recently done some improvements in midtown, so. We wanted to do a follow-up study to, just to kind of see now that some of that traffic calming is in place, um, you know, how. Just traffic circulation in general is going there, and then uh we've had some requests too to also look at um parking. Potential in downtown and kind of the midtown area, so and stay tuned for that. Um, I did want to talk just real briefly on the transit system, um, you know. Obviously, COVID's had a pretty big impact on that, our ridership has taken a hit, but we do anticipate, you know, once things um. You know, vaccines out and people get back to work in the office, it's not going to be probably how it was a hundred percent, but we do. Uh, anticipate that, you know, our ridership is going to bounce back, um, and we really want to invest the best way possible. By making our existing service really more um cost-effective and more high quality, and we can attract those um. Newer riders and and really kind of demonstrate that, you know, hey, taking the bus is a viable option for for many to to get to work, so. Uh, looking at innovative approaches to mobility, um. You know, one of the ways we're doing that right now is we've implemented this Flex Ride service, which is basically like a curb-to-curb service and. Kind of works um just like an Uber or a Lyft would, where you can essentially dial up a ride on your phone. Um, and it's really meant to be kind of a, an expansion in the circulator, so it can bring. People that are maybe not served by a fixed route transit in a certain neighborhood, kind of bring them into a, an area or a destination that is. And we've had really great success with this um in kind of North Sparks area. Um, North Valleys, we've implemented it, and we're expanding out to Spanish Springs and Verdi, so. Um, we see this as uh something that's going to continue to to grow. Um, kind of long-term for our Bus Rapid Transit, I already talked about the Lincoln Line a little bit, but um. You know, the, we'd like to extend the Virginia Line um down south, looking at. Maybe some more um, you know, higher density development that's coming that way, there's a lot of new affordable housing projects. Um, in multifamily that's that's being built down there, and. There is a need for transit for a lot of those folks, and so we're looking at possibly extending the Virginia Line down. To the vicinity of the Mount Rose Highway and then maybe supplementing some of that. Um, you know, neighborhood areas with the Flex Ride that I spoke to earlier. Uh, so as far as the RTP goes, the next step is um, well, yes, the survey has closed, but I did mention that, so. And we've got a virtual public meeting on our website right now, um, so we're going to complete our evaluation and prioritization. Um, we're already kind of scoring those projects now that we have the community feedback. And then we have a lot of work to do with our travel demand model, um, and kind of putting those projects in the appropriate timeframes. Running our air quality models to make sure that we meet that transportation conformity. And then look to finalize a draft plan to circulate that for public comment, so. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and Amy's here as well if um she would like to jump in.
Great, thank you, Daniel. Amy, did you have any thoughts or follow-up?
I think that was a great presentation, and we're here for any questions you might have.
Great, thank you so much. Commissioners, do we have questions? No questions? Discussion?
Madam Chair, I just want to appreciate, uh, we get a lot of questions, obviously, on projects regarding traffic. Um, I think you've uh appreciated, Dan, the the mention of some of the, both the South Meadows and the North Valleys where. Uh, any development, and there's a lot of it out there uh with questions, and. Uh, we often hear from the developers about, well, it's in the, it's in the RTC plan. Um, which uh I don't think we've seen for a number of years, so I appreciate you bringing it in and and doing that, and so I I think. Just any, any feedback that we would have is, uh, I think you you've captured that, we're, you know. Questioning capacity, we're always hearing about that, looking at areas where development is and and how that's being served, so. Uh, from what I saw, the the maps definitely seem to respond to, you know, the type of development and areas that we're seeing, so. Uh, definitely appreciate you uh coming in with that and and uh taking the time to update us on what's what's going on.
Thank you, and as always, um Amy and I are are available, should, you know, you have questions later on or. Just want to maybe a little one-on-one debriefing about anything, we're always happy to do that.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you so much for being here, you guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, uh Commissioner Marshall, do you have a question?
Well, I was, y- you know, I'm just, uh, I would love to be able to uh comment a little more intelligently, but. Um, I think this, there wasn't anything really included in the packet, and so this is just our, my first exposure to your. Your project list and your, uh, which I assume you're presenting was the constrained list. Um, and and so I don't have a whole lot to say, other than, are you, you know, I might take you up on your uh one-on-one. Um, feedback sessions, I'm I'm particularly interested in the sustainability and travel choices. Segment of the um RTP that, in particularly the policies and how that might be promoting, promoting those, and also the. To just the amount on the project, on the constrained project list itself, the difference between capacity building. The dollar spent there versus multimodal projects, I realize your point that. A lot of capacity projects do have um multimodal improvements on them, but. Uh, I think um. Just be interesting to see the the amount of uh resources that were dedicated to capacity versus trying to get different modes. Um, off the ground and and, you know, I really, I really appreciate. Uh, the kind of spine, the transit spine plus on-demand uh components. Um, those, uh, at least in my work life, those are, we're really trying to look at those and rethink the amount of money that we are. You know, that that our region is putting into fixed route transit. Um, is often uh, you know, it's it's a money suck compared to how many people you're actually serving. Um, I know there's uh equity issues involved in in having a fixed fixed route and. And, but I think it's really behooves us to rethink kind of how we might provide high levels of of transit. That is more consumer-friendly with the same amount of dollars. Um, and it sounds like you're exploring those mechanisms, but I lo- would love to have a opportunity to. Hear what you're guys thinking on on that as well, because it's, I know it's. Money sources are often, you know, the color of money is often tied to providing fixed route transit and other things, but to the extent that. We have the flexibility to look at both a mixture of public and uh private. Um, transportation or in transit providers. Uh, I think it's, it it could be a real interesting way of actually getting transit to the consumer that they actually can appreciate and. And participate in without having to walk significant distances either between getting to the fixed route line or to their ultimate destination. Um, I have a few more notes, but I'll spare my uh colleagues from the rest of them.
Well, thank you for that feedback, we we appreciate that.
So, um, Dan, the public meeting link is still going to be live for a little while too, so I, Commissioner Marshall, I think you can always go and check that out too. Um, and you should be able to submit comments through that.
Not a mere member of the public, come on, I deserve one-on-one treatment.
You said it.
Happy to talk with anybody, but yes, that that will be up for a while, and um, you know, as as we kind of get closer to our our final plan, we'll. Continue to put um new material up there as well.
Is there, and I and I should have checked your website, but is there, um, do you have a draft project list, constrained list, or do you have? A draft RTP in terms of programs and policies? Is that up on your?
We do, um, Amy, I don't know if it's up on the website yet.
It it's not up there yet, but we're hoping to have it up there soon. And we can uh certainly send a link to uh the commission here to let you know when it is available on our website.
That'd be useful to have something to to review and and respond to, depends on what what level of impact, input you guys want, whether. You know, pre-draft or post-draft.
I have a quick question, um, Amy or Daniel, are the road capacity or road projects funded differently than the transit projects?
They are, I'll I'll let Amy handle that one.
Yes, uh, our funding sources are restricted, our fuel tax funds most of our capacity projects, and that can only be used on roadway capacity and roadway construction. And sales tax funds are transit operations, and there have been a couple of ballot measures that are specifically dedicated uh sales tax funds for transit. And we have federal funds that are flexible between both.
Great. Thank you so much. I know you guys have been really good at securing additional funds, too, very successful for your transit operations, so congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions? Okay, thank you, Amy, thank you, Daniel.
Thank you, have a great night.
You too. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to agenda item number five, this is public hearings. Agenda item five point one, this is in regards to case number LBC two one dash zero 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 two seven five nine three five West Ranger Road zoning map amendment. This is a request for a zoning map amendment from large lot residential to single-family residential. Michelle, do we have a presentation from the applicant?
We do, we have Dave Snellgrove on the line, Dave?
Great, thank you.
Good evening, uh, Madam, Madam Chair and members of the commission, for the record, I'm Dave Snellgrove with CFA. Uh, in in here, in the uh office behind me here is the applicant Spencer Betts, so unfortunately, we're both passed up. But I have a relatively brief presentation, I say relatively brief because this, for for me, it's relatively brief. Um, I'm going to share my screen here, let me see, there we go. Think it's going to be on that one, and slideshow. Okay, can you see the opening slide on your screens?
Not yet.
Not yet, uh. Let me go back to. This.
Dave, we have it ready to go if you are having issues.
Screen two, okay, let me try that again.
There we go.
Got it.
Oh, perfect.
We have fifteen minutes, I'll start.
Okay, thank you very much, Michelle. Um, as I mentioned, Spencer is, Spencer is with me here uh tonight, if there's any questions or he needs to chime in to anything, I will. I will have him speak, uh, the project location. Property have that accessory parcel number zero eight two four five one oh four, this is out in the Panther Valley area. It's south of the Union Pacific Railroad, and it's at the current terminus of Copperleaf Drive, it's a two point nine one acre site. The goal of the applicant, Mr. Betts, is to ultimately provide a market affordable for ownership manufactured home uh subdivision on the property. Um, the property site, the surrounding uses, and I'll point out. What we have around it, we have the Union Pacific Railroad, which borders the north property line. And we have a subdivision to the south, which is Panther Valley Estates, there, the subdivision just south of that, that is kind of in that. U-shaped road is very, very similar to the product type and project type that we're we're ultimately looking at. Uh, I will point out that the Panther Estate subdivision is on SF four zone property, which is exactly the same zoning that we're we're proposing with this request. And then over to the east of us is the uh, is the Ranger Road Mobile Home Community, and you know, I could. Kind of figure that that's probably constructed in the, anytime between the sixties to the eighties, it predated uh. The Google Earth aerials, and there was no information on when that was ultim- when that was originally constructed. So that property is on MF fourteen zoned. Uh, the master plan for the property is MX, which is Mixed Neighborhood. Uh, mentioned the subdivision to the south is on SF four property, and the project, the Mobile Home Park is on MF fourteen property, both of those are identically zoned. And there's a blue circle that came up that shows that area, that orange is the MX mixed uh neighborhood master plan designation. Underneath Mixed Neighborhood down here at the bottom right, this was copied out of the master plan, there are basically three zoning designations that are conformant. With that master plan designation, those are SF four. Uh, which we're requesting, the MF fourteen, which is what the Mobile Home Park sits on, and then planned unit development. So we are requesting a zoning designation that is conformant with the master plan. Existing and proposed zones, right now, it's large lot residential, one, one acre lots, um, that doesn't really fit within the area. And it's not conformant with the master plan, and we're proposing that we go to the SF four zone, which is conformant. This zoning, I talked to Kyle uh about this as we were, after we had submitted, and he asked me if we could wait until. Uh, this is going to happen automatically to change the zoning from the L L R one over to another conformant designation. But I, the timeframe of that really didn't work out well, because Mr. Betts is in an escrow agreement, and he has a certain timeframe, so. Unfortunately, we had to move forward rather than using the automatic process that will will come down the pipe in a few months. Uh, so that he can keep his agreement moving forward. The existing site is a very flat and developable site, the uh. The photo off on the left-hand side is along the south property line looking to the west. The nor- the uh photo at the uh, on the top of the screen here, on the right-hand side. That's a photo uh from the north corner of the site, looking towards the southwest. And then you have a little bit of a panoramic view down here at the bottom right-hand side, that's the southeast corner, looking towards the northwest. The site's all very flat, very developable, as the other properties adjacent to us were uh prior to their development. There's two points of access to the site, one is a public street, and this uh, this image over on the left-hand side is. This image over on the left-hand side is what would be the primary access to the site and outside Copper Leaf Drive. And this photo was taken from the intersection of Copper Leaf Drive. Uh, and starwood or softwood at that intersection. Now. The road, the utilities are stubbed into this property. This was intended to continue. This road was intended to continue on with the previous development. The photo on the right-hand side is a private street that stubs in from the uh mobile home community to the to the east. We'd anticipate that'll probably end up being a gated act, gated emergency access or something of that sort with future development. The site does have some uh illegal dumping that has occurred. There's a there's an abandoned car that's in. Not horrible shape, but moderately bad shape. And then a few things is by far not the worst illegal dumping I've ever seen on a site that I've been going out and working on, but. There is some, it's it's readily available and convenient for people to utilize it as a trash can, so with development. This type of thing will go away. We believe that all the necessary legal findings and the additional considerations that are identified in the application form for a zone map amendment. Can all be made or agreement with staff's recommendation and. To review just a few of the findings that we feel are definitely easily made. Uh, the development land is commiserate with the character of the land and surroundings. That would be finding I. Uh, the property is an infill site making for timely and orderly efficient development. That's finding H. And the goal of Mr. Bits is pride of mar- market affordable housing development. This addresses affordable housing, which kind of covered. Under L and M. Uh, the additional considerations represents an orderly development of the city. Uh, this is an infill site with streets and utilities stubbed into the parcel. This is additional consideration two. The appropriate use of the property, this matches and conforms with the adjacent zoning. And the designations on those properties, that's additional consideration three. And this is can in conformance with the master plan. The policies were reviewed both in the application form that I submitted. And also within the staff report that uh Mr. Chisholm uh prepared for for staff, and that is additional consideration four. With that, I will close my presentation, be available for any questions.
Thank you, Dave. Michelle, do we have a presentation from Kyle?
We do. Kyle, are you ready to go? Oh, Dave, could you take your presentation? Thank you.
Just got it.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner for the Record. Um, can you all see my my presentation screen? Thank you. Um, so, thank you, Mr. Snell Grove did a awesome job, really in-depth uh presentation, so I don't think there's a. Well, I I I don't want to reiterate a lot of the things he said, uh. Um, what you have here is a zone change from uh LLR one to SF four. And I just did want to note, and I discussed this a bit in staff report, was that. The SF four zoning district uh will be renamed with the adoption of the uh code update last week. Um, so it'll now be uh converted over to SF eleven. As that was adopted by council last week. Little vicinity map, zoning map, you can't really probably even tell the difference of the colors, but they're both yellow residential zones. Um, and then really just highlight some of the key things and uh and as I outlined in the staff court, really. Uh, the key issues were zoning compatibility with the surrounding uh zoning districts. So you have. Uh, as as uh Mr. Snell Grove identified, you have in that it's. Properties surrounded by SF four existing subdivision of the south railroad right away and industrial to the north. Um, and the uh MF fourteen uh zone mobile home park just to the east. Um, and so in really looking at this, the allowed uses of SF four now SS SF eleven. Um, is uh very compatible with the surrounding area. The allowed uses are very similar. They're both residential uh zones. The density, this is a uh uh this would provide a step up for density. Um, which uh as uh Mr. Snell Grove identified is the intent is to um. Uh, it eventually have uh some affordable housing and uh manufactured home units. Um, so this this zone change would allow for them to have a a denser zoning dis- district and provides uh more housing. The development standards are are very similar. Um, the setbacks um are uh from LLR one to SF. Eleven would be um uh you you know, the setbacks are are. Are a little bit reduced, um smaller setbacks, but um one thing to note is with. Uh, any parceling of over 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 four lots, I would require a tentative map uh application, and so we'd be able. Review and uh it through discretionary review on, you know, the site layout and. Compatibility a little more thorough when del- development occurs. Uh, most I I think most importantly is master plan conformance. The SF four zone does not comply with the next master plan designation. Or excuse me, LLR one does not comply with the uh current MX master plan designation. And so this would bring the site into conformance with the master plan. Um, that being said, staff has not, I haven't received any uh public input as related to this request. And I was able to make all the applicable findings and I recommend that the planning commission recommend approval to the city council. And I am here for any questions that you may have. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. And let's bring it back to the commission for disclosures. And Commissioner Levis, you're the first one I see.
I visited the site.
Commissioner Marshall?
I'm already at the site.
Commissioner Johnson?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Veltu?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Munoz?
Same disclosures.
Uh, Commissioner Taylor, no disclosures. Michelle, this is a public hearing. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We did not receive any public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back. Uh, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions of either the applicant or Kyle. Commissioners, questions?
Ready to make a motion when you'll have one.
Okay, uh, do we have any discussion? No discussion. Commissioner Marshall?
In the matter of LDC twenty one dash zero 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 twenty seven. Based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to recommend the city council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Munoz has a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Michelle, can you please, do we have any further discussion? Okay, Michelle, do we have any or can you please take a vote?
Yes. Kathleen Taylor?
Yes.
John Marshall?
Hi.
Peter Gower is absent. Mark Johnson?
Yes.
Arthur Munoz?
Yes.
Paulo Levis?
Yes.
Alex Veltu?
Yes.
It's approved six to zero.
Great, thank you very much. Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much. We'll see you with the tentative map hopefully in a few months. Have a great night.
Good night. We'll wait for everybody to clear out. I think that was a record-breaking decision-making by this group. Okay, um, moving on to item number six, Trudy Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Commissioner Johnson, I don't know when the next meeting is.
We have a meeting scheduled for next Thursday, the twenty eighth is our next. Meeting. We haven't had one since our last Reno Planning Commission.
Any other um updates?
I don't believe o- other than um, I think at the last meeting, there was some. Um, kind of final updates to the overall regional plan, so there's been. Uh, kind of some distribution of that, but otherwise, uh, I'm not even sure what's on the agenda for next week yet, so. Uh, but apparently we'll have a report for the next Reno meeting.
Thank you. Item number seven, staff reports. Angela?
Good evening. For the record, Angela Fuas, Acting Community Development Director. Couple big project updates for you. The Prado development, which you guys had reviewed about a year and a half ago and recommended denial. And that project was reviewed by the city council last week and it had a unanimous recommendation of denial. Uh, Daybreak was the other one that we'd um, you guys had reviewed two tentative maps. Both of those tentative maps have been appealed to city council. Um, they actually are going to council next week on appeal. They were previously scheduled for another date. And and they have been um continued until next week, so I'll have an update for you at the next meeting on where those two go. And and probably the biggest one is the zoning code update. So the city council has approved the new zoning code. It's official. It's been adopted. We are very, very excited. We'll have the new code uh on our city website, hopefully later this week or early next week. We're just tweaking the final pieces before it goes live. But it is an active approved zoning code, so yay to everyone for that. Along with the new zoning code, we had to make a couple changes. We have a number of new types of applications. And so while we were updating our list of applications, we just updated all of our applications, so they're all formatted very differently. Uh, you guys generally don't see the applications themselves, but from the the user side, the 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 folks that submit the applications. Uh, it's it's pretty impactful and a special use permit used to be about thirty pages long, just our application and checklist. And now they're three pages long. So from from that perspective, they're much more clean, specific of what we need. Um, just overall uh updated from probably ten years worth of 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 not being updated, so that's exciting. We also have a number of new types of applications. Some of those are more administrative and you won't see other types of applications will come before you. Uh, the the special use permit, uh, as you know, has been changed. It's now going to be called a conditional use permit. So you'll start to see different types of applications. The other thing, and maybe you noticed it tonight, is our staff reports. Uh, citywide, we are reformatting our staff reports. So that includes everything that goes to planning commission and city council, and this is again, not specific to development projects, but citywide. How we write staff reports is changing. Um, the idea is to get all the the key information out in the beginning, so if you only read the summary. You would know the key things about that uh project or that topic. And then to get into more detail, you can read the rest of the staff report. One of the challenges we found is that our our city council often has. Uh, packets that are like a thousand pages thick. And if you had, you know, a week to read through a thousand pages of staff reports, you you would, I think, uh, learn to appreciate. Uh, brevity. So the idea is that we uh we are rewriting and reformatting the way we do staff reports. So you'll start to see that as new applications come forth. Um, I'm trying to think if there was anything else. Those are probably the 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 biggest items um that that have come out of the zoning code update adoption. And again, a- as you start to see more applications, you'll start to see where that's being implemented. One thing that I did want to remind everyone too is that we also have a twelve-month grandfathering of the old code. So if there's an applicant that wishes to use the old code, they may do so for the next twelve months. So if if they choose to use the old code, um, the application will be the old application. If they choose to use the new code, then they submit a new application, so both types of applications are still on our website. It's kind of a a confusing thing from probably from the planning commissioner's side. Um, but this gives the the development community a chance. If they were already in the process using the old code. We didn't want to make them have to start all over and go through a whole new process. They can't choose to use both. They can only use one or the other. So as again, over the next twelve months, some of your applications will be based on the old special use permit and findings. And some will be based on the new conditional use permit and new findings. So bear with us as we work through those over the next twelve months. And that's all I had for my updates.
Commissioner Levis, I got a question, Angela. Um, I was I was wondering about the delayed implementation, but one of the items that we had discussed was the. Analysis app at the end of that with the look back and then a decision to implement. Is it, how's that coming down?
Say so say that again? Or maybe explain that again?
If I recall, yeah, if I recall correctly, um, in what we looked at and we had discussion on. That there was discussion as to whether it was automatically implemented at the end of twelve months. Or if there had to be a look at it and analysis of the impacts and and then a decision whether or not to implement.
Oh, uh, it's probably specific to the sustainability section of our code.
Oh, oh, that was just sustainability. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and so what we're gonna do, um, again, we we have a number of items that. Rather than implementing them with this zoning code update, council gave us direction that they wanted to. Um, deal with some of those items separately as part of separate text amendments. So the sustainability code is one of them. We'll go through a much longer um, more robust public outreach process and stakeholder input process. And it will be specific to the sustainability section of our code, and then we'll adopt that, whatever that looks like, as a separate text amendment. So there's probably twenty to thirty different topics. That we will be doing as separate text amendments over the coming months and potentially even years.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I just had one one uh comment question about. Um, Angela, I I did notice the change in the uh staff reports. And I worry a bit about not having findings and supporting argument or supporting. Uh, statements under the particular findings and the new sys- is that? The way you're intending to do that through the whole, you know, with all development um applications?
It is, and this is a um a a format that we had used prior to what you're used to. So if you go back to our staff reports over the last twenty years, they've they've been formatted differently. Um, so this isn't completely new. This is just something we've done in the past and we're bringing it forward. The idea is that if there's a finding that can't be met. It will be discussed as part of the discussion of the staff report. And if there's a condition that's been added to address something, because uh maybe the way the site's designed. Doesn't meet a certain fighting, like for instance, compatibility. Um, what we'll we'll explain is condition, for instance, number four has been added to address compatibility and to make finding X. Um, so as long as all the findings are being met, then the staff report again will. Explain that all the findings have been met, but rather than saying, here's our response to each finding. It'll be more succinct and and say, here's, if if a finding wasn't able to be met based on the site design, here's what we've added as a condition. To address that, or here's how the site has been modified to address those findings. But what you guys are probably used to seeing more recently in our staff reports is it's very specific, you know, here's each finding and here's how the findings have been met or not met. Um, what we found is that so much of it was copy and paste. And again, our our staff reports were getting very lengthy and it wasn't providing any useful information. So what we're trying to do is get more um key information upfront, useful information, rather than keep seeing this 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 copy and paste. Right, over and over. Um, a lot of the things in our code are also required by code. And we kept seeing over and over that a will serve letter will be required at time of final map. That that's a code requirement. We don't necessarily need to put that in every single staff report, because it's 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 code. It's already required. So we tried to eliminate that kind of verbiage and really focus on what are the key issues? How have those issues been mitigated? Um, we're also trying to do a more robust outreach to the um the neighbors. Um, and so part of that again is our our new zoning code. As soon as an application gets submitted, we're gonna send out a courtesy notice. So this is something we had not done before. This is separate from the the public notice postcard that goes out. Um, within the first week after an application comes in, everyone within seven hundred and fifty feet will get a a postcard in the mail. That will say, here's a description of the project and here's a link to the project application. Here's also contact information for the applicant and the staff planner if you have questions. And the idea is that we would be um working through um neighboring concerns before it gets to planning commission. Uh, so that if 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 the neighbors did have concerns, we can work through that rather than at planning commission where we have, you know. Forty people show up for a hearing because they just heard about a project and aren't happy about it. Um, so that that's a new process. They also, so that's the courtesy notice, and again, that gets sent out right away. And then we also do the the public notice, which is required, and that is, I think it's ten days before the the public hearing.
Um, I think the competition is great. Thank you for doing that. I I guess I would, I very much like to see how the findings could be made. Because that is what we have to do as commissioner members, commission members is make those findings. Um, and so it does provide a basis upon which to take action. I understand that packets can be lengthy. We've certainly experienced some of that, but I think there's maybe a middle ground where you could, you know, have those findings and the evidence in support of those findings in a document that's either linked. So if you want to go see them, you can go see them and see how you can make the findings, or if you have an issue with making a particular finding, what city staff is saying about it. And so you can, it doesn't have to be included within the pages of the packet. If it's something that you're interested in, you can link to it. And it's certainly something you can, yes, there's generally a lot of cut and paste, but that's the basis for your making your findings. I worry that you're asking us to make all the findings without any specific thing in the record that identifies on what basis the finding can be made. So instead of, I know that it's probably less paper to flip around and say, you know, only if there's a question about a finding, we'll, you know, we'll put something into the record about it. But at least for me, I would, I would very much like to see a complete set of findings, even if it is just cut and paste, which, you know, you can always require the first draft of that be submitted by the applicant, and then you can adjust it if needed. Anyway, my two cents. Thanks.
Yep, and I appreciate the feedback. I think this is going to be a fluid process. Work with us. And I think as we start seeing more staff reports, if there's things that you feel you're not getting enough information on, we can start adding that information. So today was a good example. It was a zoning code application. So there wasn't a whole lot of detail in terms of our project. But I think as you start seeing these applications, you'll get a better idea of that their, the staff reports are better and provide useful information, or maybe not up to your liking, and we'll see what we can do to change that.
Yeah. Just Commissioner Levis here, I'd like to chime in on that too. I agree 100% with Commissioner Marshall's points. And some of the commissioners here tonight were not members when we had it under that same format previously. When we made that change to the format of enumerating all of the findings, I'd much preferred that. It was much easier to follow. I get and agree with Commissioner Marshall that some of it is cut and paste. Maybe that can be minimized. But I would also add too, that to the will serve letter example, if that's required by code, then that probably shouldn't even be a finding in the first place, and it shouldn't even be addressed. So I much preferred when we did make that switch to the more detailed, laying out the findings personally as far as being able to track through the argument.
Okay, good feedback, guys.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, if I can, I guess, both piggyback and pose another question. I agree, Commissioner Levis, I think I'm the only other one sitting here, since Commissioner Gower's not here, that remembers those. And it was something that was commented on quite a bit when we started getting that feedback. I will say I appreciate the idea of the summary at the front. I think that's a good move, maybe not so much for us, but certainly for bigger bigger packets where some of those can be identified. But I do like what Commissioner Marshall said, and I think we will, you know, pay attention as we go through and provide some feedback, because I think one of the things that we're tasked with is, you know, specifically tasked with, is to make the findings. We don't have the luxury of other, you know, reviewers to be able to, you know, overrun that. We are very specifically tasked to the findings for what we have to do. So the presentation of those and the staff presentation of those as to how those can be made, I think is crucial. So I'll keep an open mind, but I like my fellow speaking commissioners have some concerns. The other question that I have, just along those lines, talking about the changes for the public noticing, has there been any discussion or what is the status, if you're aware of, of bringing back the NABs? Which is the other kind of initial step in making the community aware of these projects? I mean, it's been almost a year, and I haven't heard anything about that. Do you have any understanding or knowledge of where those are at?
Yes. So the NABs were supposed to have been brought back early this year. So they're not meeting in January. We anticipate they will probably be meeting, gosh, I can't even give you a date. Couple things on that issue. The way that this has been set up, the NABs, is that if the council person who represents that ward wants to bring back their NAB, then that NAB will come back. If that council person decides at this point during COVID, they're not, they don't want that NAB to come back, then those particular NABs won't be coming back. So it will be a council decision, and each council person can choose to bring them back or not. Separate from that, during COVID, it's been about 10 months, some of the NAB members have expired or termed out. And so the, I think in February, the remaining NABs that still have to be appointed or reappointed will go to city council. So a lot of the NABs actually don't even have enough members to have a quorum. So that is still in process. And I think that's supposed to, likely supposed to happen in February, where council will appoint the remaining NAB members that either have termed out or expired.
Okay, thank you for that update. I appreciate it, I think.
Yeah, and separate from that, just again, as part of our outreach process, we as planning staff are going to be including all of the NAB members on our, what we call our development review memo. Memo, duh. So again, twice a month, when applications come in, we put together a memo that provides a project description and a link, so you can see the application. We're going to be forwarding that to all of the NAB members. And we're also going to give them access to an electronic form. So rather than them having to email us or scan some kind of written comments in, they can automatically go into the online form and write their comments. So while they may not all be meeting, you will still now have an opportunity to get comments from the NAB members. And you'll start to see that, like I said, probably after February, once all the new members have been appointed to the NABs.
Thank you.
Angela, I want to, I guess, propose maybe a middle ground for how the agendas and the packets are laid out. I defer definitely to the judgment of Mark and Paul and the folks that have been on the commission long enough that have seen how it happened beforehand. But I do like the idea of staff kind of teeing up the issues that they think will be contentious for us. Maybe that goes at the front of the packet, and then you put everything inclusive, including things that are copy and paste at the end of the packet. So it's kind of a, we can see what is really contentious in the staff's mind, and then also look at everything in the traditional fashion. And that probably doesn't alleviate your concern that the packet's being huge, but maybe that helps address some of the concerns staff has while ensuring that people that have seen it done before and liked the way it was done more recently, they'll see it the way they like to see it.
Yeah. And like I said, let's take a few months and see how the new staff reports work with the different types of projects and new applications. Definitely keep the feedback coming in, and we will, you know, work with staff to figure out how we can make these staff reports work for you, and also not be so lengthy with information that is just copied and pasted. I would rather give you key, relevant information. And again, addressing the findings, I completely understand where you're coming from. We don't want to not include information on the findings, so maybe that was misrepresented. I think we're just going to do it in a different format, a format that you're not used to seeing. So let's work together to make sure that we give you a staff report that you need to make these decisions and be informed.
Angela, are the findings being revised too?
They are.
And I don't think they're, it seems like they're a little bit condensed.
Correct.
So that might have to.
Yeah, and you know, my favorite finding is window placement, right? So what does a window placement have to do as a finding? Those are the kind of findings that should really just go away. We need findings that actually focus on the key issues. So that'll be something new that I think we'll work through with you guys as well, as just addressing these new findings.
Yeah, as an architect, there are times when windows do need to be made.
It's true.
Not going to let that one go completely, but I do.
Okay, agenda item number eight. Commissioners' suggestions for future agenda items. Commissioners?
Well, I just wanted to do my impression of Lady Gaga singing the National Anthem.
Moving on to agenda item number nine, public comment?
I do not have any public comment for this item.
Unless Mr. Marshall would like to provide a three-minute public comment.
Oh, I could do that.
No.
I combine it with, you know, my dancing to Single Ladies, but I'll spare you that too.
Maybe we can use it as a bridge to the item. Okay.
I'll move to adjourn before he makes any more offers.
We've done the item number 10, adjournment?
I second that.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Have a good week.
Have a good evening.